I hope recording started right?
Yes, yes, you can move on.
Okay. Good morning one and all. So today I am covering up with Oracle Cloud HCM. We will go through a quick walkthrough about Oracle Cloud HCM. So what are the modules available in Oracle Cloud HCM? So what are the topics like functional, technical? And also key information about Oracle projects, how we work with Oracle project in day-to-day life? So all these things will be going through a quick walk. So in Oracle Cloud HCM, it's completely SaaS-based product. So we can easily operate through any internet browser using Google Chrome, Internet Explorer, Internet Explorer, Mozilla Firefox and also mobile, using mobile application from Play Store and iOS Store also. So yeah. So we have many modules in Oracle Cloud HCM. The basic core module is Core HR Module. So Core HR is the key module for us. So we need to learn this Core HR Module that is mandatory and also we need to learn the high level, high level Oracle Cloud setups. And how we operate the Oracle Cloud HCM application? And what are the upgrades? What are the project key setups? Everything we are going to develop and set up in using Oracle Functional Setup Manager. We call it as Functional Setup Manager. So Core HR is a key module that we are going to learn at a basic level. And then these are the other modules like absence management, goal management, performance management. So like that there are many modules. So we can learn Core HR with a parallel modules like absence management or compensation, time and labor like that, any three modules or any two modules is fine. So Core HR is the module that we we gonna understand everything about Oracle HR. So usually, okay. What HCM means human capital management offers? Means what are the functions, what are the features available in Oracle? So majorly we all know that. Okay. In any companies or in any big organizations. So it it will be completely planned and executed in jobs, okay? So. Especially when we see HR department. So HR people usually hire employees. They do all the employer-related activities from hiring to retirement. So they need to hire candidates, they need to onboard the candidates. Then these candidates will be converted as employees. So once he is the part of any organization, then that employee is that employee has real-time work-life. Which means they had, okay, they they will be paid salaries, they will be promoted, they will be given P of benefits like P of bonus, medical allowances, traveling allowances like that. So properly those employees will be taken care by any company or organization. So these we are going to see in Oracle HCM offerings. Okay. Now, key takeaways. What you get out of this learning activities? First of all, you are going to learn my enterprise. What is mean by enterprise? Enterprise in shortcut. Enterprise is a company or a big organization. Well-organized organizations are a company which consists of employees, management, departments, stakeholders, business. Okay, all these financial, financials, everything, so all together, that that will be treated as an enterprise. In simple ways, we call it as company or organization. Offerings configuration, so how on high level we are going to introduce to Oracle Cloud HCM with offerings configuration? Then functional areas, implementation projects, task list. So these are key takeaways from this course learning. Okay. Now. So usually, we all know that once you undergo on the training about Oracle Cloud HCM with respect to Core HR and other modules like absence, time and labor, payroll. So if you learn thoroughly, if you practice well, then what kind of jobs you are going to apply? So what will be the? What is your job role in day-to-day life? What you are going to do in the next, you know, coming days? So majorly on a quick walkthrough, okay? So after taking the course, you are going to apply for jobs, right? So there are majorly four jobs which you can apply, okay, there are four jobs. Which you can apply in real time. The first job is like you can apply for end-user, okay, Oracle Cloud. Oracle Cloud. HCM. Real-time. Jobs in global market. So in India and as well as for US, UK, any remote or permanent contract, any jobs you can apply. Okay, you can apply after taking the course for end-user job, end-user, end-user. Application. So this is the easiest job which you can apply, end-user jobs you can apply. These end-user jobs in real time, they will be called as in their job, their job or positions are called as HR analyst. Or HR specialist. HR analyst or HR. HR application. Analyst or HR application. So specialist, this is the first job where you can apply easily, means this is a very easy job where you can apply. So for this, what you required, what you required is like? In in any organization or company, how HR people work in day-to-day life? How they interact with employees, how they hire? Okay, how they hire candidates? So what, how they pay to their employees? So what will be the business issues? So all these kind of things, they will be taking care from hire to retire, okay, from hired. From. From hire to retire. Process. These HR people will take care in any company or organization. Okay, this is the first job where you can apply. The second job where you can apply for. Okay, the second job where you can apply for in global markets like for business analyst. So for business analyst job also, you can apply. So what are the business analyst job or? Okay, job activities or job responsibilities? Okay, in simple terms, business analyst are the key people, business analyst are the key people. Key person. Okay, business analyst is the key person who will be spark means single point of contact, means single point of contact. For, for client. Client side. Stakeholders. Management, people, management. For stakeholders, management, okay? Uh, for the implementation. Implementation team, teams. Technical. And functional. Consultants. Developers. Et cetera. Not developers, also developers, project management team. Team. Okay. Et cetera. So these business analyst. Okay, business analyst persons key job is two. They will, they will be, they will be acting as a single point of contact for client side means whatever the client requirements are there, what we are going to implement or develop for this project, they will be taking care of all that requirements, they will be collecting all that requirements. They will discuss with stakeholders like HR, HR teams at client side, HR teams, finance team. Like that, uh, technical teams, the technology development teams. Okay, higher management like higher management like C, CTOs. Okay, CFOs, CEOs, but with all that people, they will be interacting in day-to-day. For collecting, for collection of all the business requirements, business challenges. So that kind of all, whatever the requirements are there, they are going to collect, they are going to collect, they are going to capture in a particular documents. So the documents have a proper name, so they develop the documents, they will design the documents. Uh, then they are going to distribute, these documents will be distributed to functional and technical consultants. Okay, they will be implementing the requirements, they will be developing and developers will develop any technical, uh, technical related, application related. Uh, any new scope for the implementation is there, they will be developing and project management team like the project managers. Okay, all that people like whatever who who are involved in the particular project at client side and business side and implementation side. So on all sites, they will be covering up, there will be single point of contact, they collect all the information, they will develop the documents like functional design documents, we call it as functional design documents, FDDs. Okay, TDDs, technical design documents, that kind of documents they are going to develop. And that documents they will distribute to technical and functional consultants and these consultants will start working on the project. Okay, so these two jobs are very easy, okay, you can apply, but these these two jobs will be minimal like there will be not major jobs, okay, there 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 will be minimal like a few jobs will be there in the market. So that jobs will be quickly hired, so they will not take much time to to hire this for this particular two jobs. So we you can also apply for these two jobs, but these two jobs are rare jobs, okay? Okay, and then now comes like the third. Okay, the third job like. You can apply for consultant jobs. Consultant jobs. These consultant like we have functional or technical. Or techno-functional. Consultants, we call. In real time. So these people, what consultant, functional consultants or technical consultants, what they are going to do, okay? These consultants, these consultants will work on a new implementation project, okay? They can work on new implementation. Project. They can work on any existing, okay? Existing ongoing, okay, ongoing implementation. Implementation project. Okay, they can work on any, okay, any migration projects. Okay, any migration projects. Okay, they can work on any support projects. Any support projects. Okay, so these consultants, these consultants in real time. So you will be finding in Nowkari, Master, Indeed, like there are many job hotels. So there will be functional consultants or technical or techno-functional consultant jobs. So what these consultants will do in their real-time job is like, they will be working on new implementation projects or they will be working on existing ongoing implementation project. It might be migration project or it might be support project. So new implementation project in shortcut way is like a fresh, a fresh implementation means fresh project where the client want to the client want to implement Oracle Cloud HCM. They want to acquire Oracle Cloud HCM, they want to implement in their organization or company. And they want to distribute to their employees in real-time jobs, okay? So on what purpose, how all that kind will discuss in detail, but implementation project is like a new fresh project. The client may be using any existing system, legacy system or they they are very new to the Oracle Cloud HCM. So whenever the client is new, new for the Oracle Cloud HCM, we call usually new implementation project. Existing ongoing implementation is project like the project has started somewhere six months before. Now the project is like they will be, they will be in some particular phase like they will be, um, somewhere uh, in CRP one, CRP two or in UAT. So in that particular, uh, in that particular phase, so sometime a an employee, I mean, any implementation consultant uh, resigned his job or he he got some new, okay, new projects or something. Then in that time, your project managers, your company going to assign any ongoing implementation project for you. So in that case, in that particular point of time, what you need to do, you need to, you need to take all the KT means knowledge transfer from existing consultants. Whoever worked in the project, you need to collect as many as information you you need to. All the templates, all the documents, everything you need to collect and then you need to understand it thoroughly, what is as-is. Project as-is process or to-be process, okay, there in the projects like in the projects real-time, there is like as-is process. Okay, and also to-be, okay, to-be process. So as-is process means any existing requirements, whatever the client is using previously. That all requirements, that all processes we call it as as-is process, so you are going to understand each and every requirement that are existing, that are used by the client. And to-be pro, to-be process is like now you are as a consultant, as a consultant, whether you are a functional or technical. You need to design the documents, you need to work, the business analyst people majorly, they 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 uh, can design the documents, so based on their inputs, I mean, they gonna, they gonna develop the document, but based on your, your understanding, based on your, your thought process, your real-time implementation. So based upon your inputs, they are going to business analyst, people can document the document, I mean, they they gonna uh, capture each and every requirements from business and they gonna put in the document. So you are going to know from the as-is document, based on the client requirements document, as-is document. Now you are going to develop, now you are going to design. Okay, the to-be process like you are going to design the solution, you are going to develop the document, that is called functional design documents or technical design documents. So based on that document, you are going to start working in a project. So that is a, a, a existing ongoing implementation project, migration project means uh, client might be using e-business suit, so Oracle standard product is like Oracle E-Biz, Oracle Apps, we call it as. So from that Oracle E-Biz or Oracle Apps or he might be using SAP systems or some other Microsoft, Microsoft Dynamics. So he might be using some third-party applications or some existing systems. So from that system, the now client want to switch to Oracle Cloud HCM. So particularly these projects are treated as migration projects or modernization projects. So migration project or modernization project, usually what we we will do is like. So we are going to take all the requirements from client, okay, what are their existing process, what is their leave process, what is their hiring process like that, we are going to collect all that information. Based on that information, we are going to develop to-be processes. So what we can do in Oracle Cloud HCM, what are, what we are going to develop in Oracle Cloud HCM, so that we are going to demonstrate and that we are going to present to client in CRP, control room pilot, CRP stages or CRP phases. So support project usually after of, after completing all these kind of projects like. So the project is completed, so the project is completed, implementation phases, okay, migration phases, everything is completed, the the client has gone live, so the client has gone live. Now, what usually, what usually these consultants like functional or technical consultants usually do is like. So they 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 can work in support projects, support projects is like the client has gone live. So which means they will be having some issues, okay, the sometimes the application may hang, okay? Sometimes the application need to be upgraded to the new, okay, new updates, quarterly updates. So sometime the the requirement, client may ask for new requirement. So in in that particular phase, you need to, you know, work on some, okay, uh, changing the scope of the project, so you are, you need to take that requirement, new requirement. So how that change requirements will work in, uh, in support projects like that? So you need to provide some annual maintenance means some project, if any project issues arises. If any bugs or upgrades so are required, so those particularly we call them as support projects. So this is the major jobs which you can apply after completing the course or in between also you can apply for end-user application, business analyst job, these two while learning itself you can apply, okay? But for this consultant jobs, you need to be thorough because this consultant jobs are very, very crucial. High-level jobs where you need to have complete understanding about a project. So you need to have understanding about as-is and to-be process. So you need to under, understand everything about what are migration projects? Okay, so all these things, things you need to thoroughly expertise, then only you can apply for consultant jobs. So this is after learning the course, but this you can apply for, uh, while you are undergoing the course. After a one month or like that, you can based upon your expertise, your learning efficiencies, so you can apply for a job. So, uh, okay, I have covered up what are jobs available in Oracle Cloud HCM in global market. Okay, this is done. A simple walkthrough, okay, now I have explained you all that what jobs are there in HCM. Now we will see in any company, if you are a implementation consultant, okay, or any business analyst. Whatever job you are using, so a case study means, uh, how the company or enterprise implemented Oracle Cloud HCM, so what is their requirement? So in 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 phases, how they implemented, all these things just quickly we I will go through. So the purpose of this case study is to complete the requirements as defined in this document to help validate the concepts learned during the training sessions. Okay, now, business description in Fusion Finance and HCM has its head office in Atlanta, Georgia, I mean, the company or an enterprise, uh, their head office located in Atlanta, Georgia. Um, and it is also present in the following countries, United Kingdom and India. So it is a multi-org organization, their head office, their finance head office is located in Atlanta, Georgia, US. And it it's also has its, uh, okay, business in UK, India as well. So this is the about their enterprise. Okay, now, implementation challenge, phase one, manage enterprise HCM information settings. So as I told, any project, any project in the organizations, they will be, they will be implemented in phases. The first phase is like, the first phase is like, they will start the project like kickoff meetings, we all usually call it as kickoff meeting. Familiarization sessions, CRP stages, business requirements gatherings. Functional design documents, technical design documents, development phase. So usually in the first phase, in the first phase, HCM, I mean, human capital, human capital management consultants. They start working, they they start doing setups, high-level setups, they will perform. The first high-level setups is like manage enterprise HCM information. This is a high-level setup that they are going to perform on very first uh, phase one. So in this phase one, in this phase one, they are going to set up, they are going to set up enterprise structures. They are going to set up legal entities, legal addresses, they are going to set up, they are going to set up payroll statutory units. People group, legal reporting unit. So these key information, HCM consultants will be doing in phase one. Finance consultants will usually work on creating like ledgers, general entries, chart of accounts. So that kind of information, HCM people, business units, reference data sets like many like. So we are, we are going to segregate between HCM consultants, finance consultants, supply chain consultants. So there will be based upon different modules which are available in Oracle Cloud. So based on that, we are going to do all the high-level setups. But for HCM people, enterprise setup, legal entities, legal addresses, location and organizations, geography, departments, jobs, this kind of high-level setups we are going to do. So those after completing phase one, like enterprise setups, workforce structures, department, jobs, all these things, so that is a phase one. And in phase two, so we are going to cover like, we are going to perform all the UAT uh, unit testing, okay, user acceptance testing, all these kind of testings we are going to do. Uh, but yeah, so basically. This, uh, phase three, person and employment details. Okay. Jobs, departments. Chairman, vice chairman, these are like jobs, okay? So locations, US head office, New York branch. So in real time, you are going to analyze and collect this kind of information. So in real time, you are going to uh analyze and collect this kind of information from client. Based on that requirement, you are going to develop a document, proper document. Based on that document, you are going to start configuring, doing all your high-level setups in the project. So this is a quick walkthrough about the case study. So now we have covered uh high level, what comes out of H C M and what are the jobs available in H C M. So that we covered, now uh I will quickly show you. Okay. What are the H C M key concepts? So if any H C M functional or technical consultant is there, they must understand, they must learn key concepts, establish enterprise structure. So establish enterprise structure is the uh high-level setup configuration tasks. Then divisions, legal entities, business units, reference data sets, business unit set assignments. Then estab- in establish enterprise structure, the flow starts with here. The flow starts with establish enter enterprise structures. Then the flow continues like establish job and position structures, review configuration, load configuration. So this is phase one, high-level tasks. And the H C M, in phase two, like the next configuration setup task is like divisions, legal entities, business unit, departments. So like that, you are going to do all your setups configuration. Now I will show you. Now I will show you. Okay. So this is a project charter on a high level in day-to-day real-time projects. We are going to, we are going to capture the client requirements. All the business information and what we are going to distribute among the project team members. So this is the document, we call it as project charter. So you can see the name Oracle E R P Modernization Project Charter. So this is a project charter, so this project charter consists of a reference number. So we will uh analyze and deposit each and every uh document number. So document number must be there, document name must be there, project char- charter and what kind of project it is. Okay, it is Oracle E R P Modernization. So client name, everything will be endorsed in the project and who are working, who are, who are the main members of the project. So what are their uh, okay, what are their key jobs? So these people like Arif Mohammed, Mayur, Oakley Project Manager, Program Manager. So, so these people are involved in the project. So what they have done, initial draft, so this Arif Mohammed has done initial draft. Mayur Oakley has done, drafted all the feedback, updated with organizational change and training strategy. So basic uh understanding that this uh this table, this uh table what it covers is like, these people are key people uh at a project side. So they have collected this kind of information from the business, just to remember. And then uh who are point of contact that uh what they they are going to deliver? What they are going to give to the client, what is the output? So these are the out in in inputs. So this project people who are involved, they are going to collect the information, they are gathering the information. This is like inputs from the project, this is the output, okay. These people, these people usually color, these people deliver means output the all the whatever we have done so far in the project, they are going to deliver to client. So Kishore Kumar Delivery Manager, Relationship Delivery Max due to Nolan. So these people are very important in the project where they are going to deliver the project. So on a high, high level, project charter contains um project mission goals, objectives, key deliverables. Uh what the project consists of, everything we are going to capture. And if somebody has some doubt, if somebody did not understand or something need to be done. So they are, they will put their feedbacks, they will exchange this document in between the project teams. So who are involved in the project, they are going to give their feedback, comments. Based on their comments, the people will be working and involved in the project. Those, so this is a high level of the project charter, you can see. Like this properly, like this proper documentation will be done. When, what, how the project is taking care among all the project members involved. Everything will be captured in this document, project charter. And that will be shared among all the project teams. So this is the high level, change roadmap, strategies, ongoing change support. Oh, many, many contents will be there, so we will discuss in detail when we, when we start working on a project. I have just shown you how this document looks, how the information is captured and distributed among the team members. Now, I am going to show you another document, which is like, as I am talking, when you, when you work on migration projects, especially in migration projects. In any migration projects, so client might be using some existing system. So from that system, the client want to adopt to Oracle Cloud H C M. So the client might be using some existing system. Like S A P, SAP, you usually call it as Microsoft Dynamics, Oracle Apps, E-Business Suits. So like that, client might be using any system. From that system, the client is now adopting Oracle Cloud H C M. So in their existing system, how the existing system works. So these are all like contents, how existing system works, how they are going to do their jobs, everything, the data will be there. You can see, this is the E-Business Suit screen and person name, people, screen fields like that uh action type. This is action type screen, it consists of last name, first name. So these are the screens with respect to the pages, tabs. Personal information, employment, office details, birth date. So in each and every screen, how the information is captured, how they are going to use this application, E-Business, E-Business Suit previously. So the client want these same kind of things in the Oracle Cloud H C M. So you must be careful that you you should not skip, you should maintain birth data field, label, birth data field, town of birth, personal employment, same like, the screen might look differently, but these fields, these fields and these tabs, everything must be there in the Oracle Cloud H C M. So how you are going to develop, how you are going to capture? All this key information is very mandatory. So you must think like, now you are like you are designing a solution. You are resolving a problem. So in that sense, you need to understand, okay, this is a personal information page which consists of personal, employment, office details, tab. Uh these are all different fields of, and then effective dates. This is a from to, from date to date, latest start date, search field, address picture buttons. So you must understand what are buttons, what are labels, birthday, town of birth, these are all labels, these are all fields. So you must understand all this kind of information and now you are going to develop in Oracle Cloud H C M. So don't worry, it is very easy and it is very easy. We are not going to do um any coding kind of thing, just drag and drop. Uh functional configuration, functional setups you are going to perform with some sense, okay. With some sense, understanding of concepts, workflows, logic, that is mandatory. If you understand the logic structure, then you can um do this kind of development in Oracle Cloud H C M. So this is the previous uh client legacy system, that is E-Business Suit, in E-Business Suit. How each and every page looks like and what are the key information is there in previous system? You are going to adopt Oracle Cloud H C M with the same information. And also if required any additional information also, you need to configure setup. That you are going to do. I hope it is clear, so this is one of the document which I have shown you that how the business requirements are gathered, distributed among the business analysts, functional consultants, project management team, developers. How the document is distributed, how, when the work, the real implementation or migration project support starts. How they start implementing, how they start developing each and every screen page. So we are going to see in our uh training sessions in the upcoming days. So this is completely real time, so we are going to cover the new implementation project, existing ongoing implementation projects, as is to be processed, migration and support projects. So this is, if you learn this, if you learn the the how to apply for this consultant jobs, if you are thorough with this, then these two is very easy, this is very easy. So everything is there in in the, in this uh complete learning or understanding of this job. Consultant jobs, if you understand, if you start learning and practicing, then this business analyst and end user job is very easy for you to develop and to work in real time. That we are going to see in our day-to-day sessions. So I hope I have covered uh what we can get out of Oracle Cloud H C M real-time jobs. What key configuration setups that we are going to perform in Oracle Cloud H C M? And what are the modules are there in Oracle Cloud H C M, core H R, absence, goal management, compensation, payroll, time and labor. Functional setup is a high-level, high-level module where it is to be learned and to be worked between all the modules, H C M people, finance, any mo- any, any module. Consultants need to learn this functional setup manager, they need to work. Core H R is completely, core H R is completely H C M, human capital management module. This is the high-level key module. So this is a mother module, if you learn this mother module, then you can understand absence management, goal, talent, all other modules easily. Now we have covered through what is a project charter means, so who will be involved in the project? So how the document, how all the uh client requirements, everything will be captured in any document? We have covered that and if in any migration project, how, in any migration project, how we need to collect, gather all the requirements from client, especially from stakeholders, H R department people? How you are going to distribute between your project members? Then how you start on the project, that we have covered. And a case study also, we have just seen through case study like how uh a project is implemented in how many countries? So what uh how legal entities, their finance, their legal addresses, their payroll statutory units, all this kind of uh crucial information is gathered. So how we are going to do a project setup, an enterprise setup, that we have just uh gone through a case study. Understanding of what case study means and so this is the day-to-day uh tracker. So in real time, whenever we are doing any project, whether it is implementation or migration or support project. Usually these kind of trackers, we are going to maintain, the tracker name is H C M to be familiarization notes. So familiarization is one of the, one of the uh phase, one of the in 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 a phase, uh in a particular phase. This is one of the milestone, familiarization is one of the milestone where we are going to capture all the crucial information from client. So who the, from client side, who have raised any ticket or any item? What, just we will go through one uh basic, what client has raised their okay uh input. So Mohammed Rokaya just raised from their client side, Unisa means it's a client name. Uh input question or concern or issue, any anything, it might be input or question, concern issue. Where do we find leave payout entitlements for expired fixed term contract F T C? Is this process digested or will it still be manually calculated? So just he is trying to ask like, okay. Leave payout entitlements for fixed fixed term contract, whether it is manually or automate automated. Basically, whatever the out to outcome, like this is an input from client side and output from implementation consultants. From client, this is for us, I mean who are working in any project. They need to provide the solution, they need to provide the answer. So basically, uh someone has given some answer like generally speaking, leave entitlement payouts will be processed and calculated as a part of termination process. In the configuration setup, this data is configured to be sent to payroll for processing and pay payment. After payroll processing, this data can be brought back into Cloud H C M or access, like they are giving some answers. Uh uh it might, you you might not understand what this question is like, but when you go deeper into the learning, learning of uh the process. What is familiarization session, what is a project, what is uh configuration task that we need to do? So basically, when we go step into deeper discussions and practice, you are going to understand this kind of uh complete understanding and learning of each and every, this is the dashboard where uh what kind of how many uh duration, how many uh modules are involved and is there any remarks, how many questions are raised? Oh, this kind of a dashboard we will build, so based upon each and every module, we are going to capture all the key client side requirements. Whether if this is like on absence, can you create approval workflow based on leave type? Like they will raise based upon different modules, they are going to raise their uh questions or queries from client side. So that need to be addressed and that need to be provided with a proper solution in our projects. So this is very high level, hope you understand what is mean by a project. So how in real time, what jobs are there in H C M majorly? We can see, we can expect, we can expect consultant jobs. Uh the the these consultant jobs are very high demand right now in the market. Especially when it is come, when it is comes to U S, United States, U K, majorly, majorly like U A G. United Arab Emirates, so in Dubai, in Arab Emirates, majorly there are many, many jobs are available for consultants. So once you are thorough with the Oracle Cloud H C M, then only you can, you need to apply because these consultant jobs without practice, without complete learning, if you apply, then in your project you are going to face. You are going to face uh like, if if you, if you, if you got a new implementation project, no need to worry. If you got a new implementation project, you have some time, you have good time to learn, adopt and implement. But when you got an existing ongoing project or a migration support project, in this particularly in these three In this particularly, in these three areas. For any consultant, you need to be thorough, learning and practice. Without that, if you step into the job, you will be at risk. So be careful while applying for this consultant jobs. So basically, you need to practice, I mean, you know, don't worry, it is not very hard or. Or hard learning is very easy. You, you must keep your focus and daily you need to learn and practice. So theoretical learning is one side. You need to learn all the setups, how to open the application, how to do a setup? How you capture the data, these kind of things are very easy. But understanding the logic, so what is enterprise, what is a department, how it is linked? Enterprise, how enterprise is linked to a department, in department, how jobs are linked? So on a high level, you need to understand the logic. Then if you understand the logic, so if client asks you any question or if client give you any requirement? It is very easy to you to understand and to implement in your work life, in your jobs. So that is. Um. My explanation for today, so what we have seen, these four jobs, how to apply? And this end user application, business analyst consulted. Tomorrow I am going to show you end user application, so end user application, I am going to show you tomorrow. In the application, how it looks, how it will be operated? So those kind of things I will show you, so you will be learning in real time. As well as we are, we are going to learn theoretically how to do setups. So what is mean by a business unit, what is mean by a legal entity? So theoretical learning is important as well as you need to have a thorough understanding about the logic, business logic. That's it for today, any questions if you have, please ask me, I am there to answer your queries, questions. Yes, from participant Bhavani Nikhil. Sandeep. Anyone can ask any question?
No. No sir.
Okay, hope all you have understand, hope all you have understand about what is mean by a project? What is, how to apply for these four jobs? Basically, in these four jobs, what will be your responsibilities or job roles? That we are going to do in day-to-day work life? So what is a project, what is project charter? What is familiarization sessions? So hope you understand, at, at, at least a basic idea, you, you got how these documents look like? So how in these documents, information will be captured? How these documents will be distributed among your project team? So on a high level, I have explained and on a client legacy system. In any migration projects, how you need to gather your requirements, how you need to develop the document? So what you need to develop, configure in your Oracle Cloud HCM? That roadmap, everything I have shown you on a basic idea. Tomorrow we will see in real time how we are going to develop those, all this. I, what I have demonstrated today, we will, we will go through one by one in detail, not daily session. So that you can understand in any, for any, if you want to apply for any job? Or if anybody asks you in real time, business questions, in interviews, you can answer easily. And if you get a job right, it will be very easy for you. Because if you understand about a project, if you understand about business logics, everything. Then it is easy for you to do your job without any risk. That is for sure, from this take, from your key learnings, from this course. Yeah, that's it for, for, for me for today, we can rejoin tomorrow and continue our sessions. Yeah, thank you everyone, we will connect back tomorrow.
Thank you.